Good evening, folks. Guys, if everybody can just stand up and pull up here a little ways. Guys, welcome to the December 2 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The meeting is being recorded for cable television, so you can watch all this later on on the cable station. So the first item tonight will be the proclamation for the Linfield Youth Super Bowl Champions. So we have a, I'd like to bring Ed Nastari, the head coach, up. Ed, come on up. Dick, can he get on there?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, press the button on the bottom, it'll light it up. Ed, congratulations on a great season and a Super Bowl win. What I'd like to do is have you introduce your team and bring them up one at a time, and then at the end we'll have a picture together with the group.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, first off, we'll start with Tyler Adamo, number one.
Just stand up right in the line up left.
Nikki Grusis, number two. Drew Orvloski, number four. Thank you. Massimo Legrazzo, number seven. Michael McCarthy, number 11. Ian McCarthy, number 36. Michael Murphy, number 23. Joey Wing, number 27. Johnny Pescucci, number 32. Jared Burnaby, number 38. Jesse Doorman, number 39. Evan Mordazie, number 42. Walter Radowski, number 46. Maximus Nastari, number 48. Christopher Dupree, number 62. Lyndon St. George, number 77. Ethan Miranda, number 79. Kyle McDonald, number 99. Coach McCarthy, Sean McCarthy, come up. Coach Walter Radowski, come up. Coach Johnny Pescucci, come up. Our cameraman, Mr. Dan McCarthy, please come up. And I got one more. And, and our eye in the sky. Matt Adamo.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to congratulate all of these athletes, student athletes, gives us great pride, because a lot of these students, these athletes, we've already recognized for everything, winning a baseball championship. So the future is certainly bright in Linfield. Citation, we're going to give here, I'll read it. It reads, "Whereas, participation in athletic endeavors allow the youth of the Linfield community the valuable life lessons of teamwork and good sportsmanship, the rewards of dedication and commitment and satisfaction obtained by the achievements that come from their application, and whereas the 2019 Linfield Youth Football B-Team comprising 26 young athletes and a great coaching staff of six exemplify these traits while compiling a record of eight wins and two losses. And whereas, the B-Team continued its excellence of the regular season in its three playoff games with the two shutout wins over Newburyport, 28 to nothing, and North Redden, 14 to nothing, it's great to see them beating the Hornets, for the Kitchen Division Championship, culminating in a 26 to 6 victory over Masconahamit in the Cape Anne Youth Football Super Bowl, in which the Linfield B-Team avenged a 28 loss in the previous year. Therefore, with great pride, we, the Linfield Board of Selectmen, do hereby offer our congratulations and those of the town for outstanding athletic achievements in your exemplary display of sportsmanship and teamwork, given this second day of December 2019." Congratulations, job well done, to the coaches and players.
Tyler, get your trophy.
Guys, come over here. What do you want?
Dick.
They have all those lined up behind us, right?
Dick. What about right, right there?
We got a compressor?
That's what I said, we just right here, let's nail them down.
Okay, yeah, there were two rows, two rows in the front, and we'll stay in behind them. You'll stand on the chair behind.
Thank you. Coaches, get in here, guys.
That's the only thing I have, one is wiffle ball.
Guys, coaches, get in here. Get in here, guys. Everybody.
Coaches, you get in the middle, stay on the end.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It was, it was better, it should have been. Guys, it's.
Clean this up here.
Everybody here? Okay. Hey, guys, look out. We got it?
That's the quietest.
All right, guys. Guys, before you leave. Hey, before you leave, what do we owe the Selectmen?
Two, class, one, three. One, two, three.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Adamo. Adamo. Another job well done and another championship. Baseball, football, that's unbelievable. I'm not supposed to see you go?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't realize, thank you very much. Cheers, my friends. Appreciate it, man. Thank you very much.
Hey, folks, if we can move along, we still have our meeting in session, so if we can move it out. How's it going? Okay, folks, next we're doing is our public hearing on our tax classification. We have Dick Simmons here, our interim assessor. Dick, welcome.
It's nice to be here. Thank you for having me. As my father used to say, it's nice being had by you. I'm also here with two members of the Board of Assessors, Don Garrity and Rich O'Neil. Lani Chelle could not make it tonight, she sends her apologies. And what we're here to do tonight is discuss a couple of things. One, allocating the, it's not a fine, okay, there we go. Allocating the local property tax levy among five property classes for the fiscal year 2020 and the selection of a minimum residential factor. Whether or not to allow for residential exemption, whether or not to allow for a small commercial exemption, and whether or not to allow for a discount up to 25% for classified open space. And let's start off with the residential exemption. The Board of Selectmen will establish a residential exemption, which can establish a residential exemption, which is in effect, but only above 14 municipalities, or 4% of the municipalities within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have the residential exemption. Typically, the residential exemption is best used in communities, I like to walk around, so I'm tied to this microphone. Typically, communities that are best suited for the residential exemption are communities that have a large number of multifamily homes, apartment buildings, non-known or occupied, or have a lot of vacation homes that are not owned or occupied. The exemption is given to all property owners who occupy the dwelling. And the other people, the exemption is not given to people who don't occupy the building, and therefore, the levy is shifted internally between residential properties, property owners that have either occupy the property, don't occupy the property. Linfield doesn't really fit into that category. The only, there are no towns in Essex County that have the residential exemption, and other nearby towns, primarily in Middlesex County and Suffolk County, such as Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Waltham, Watertown, and Boston, all have the residential exemptions. They don't fit Linfield's profile of primarily single-family homes. Historically, the Board has voted against this local exemption. Now, I can go through all the exemptions if you want to, or we can vote on this one, you want me to continue? Okay. Okay. The next one up is a small business exemption. This establishes an exemption for all small businesses, all real estate that is occupied totally by companies that employ fewer than 10 people. The benefit is primarily to the property owner, who may or may not shift the savings onto the tenants. It's up to them. Only 20 towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts offer the small commercial exemption, about 5.7% of all the towns. And only one town in Essex County, the town I currently live in, Swambskett, offers that. And I don't know why Swambskett does, but that's their choice. Historically, again, the Board has voted against adopting the residential exemption. Finally, as far as the local options go, with the exception of classifying the rate, is the open space discount. This, the open space discount gives a discount to all vacant land that is so designated. And it is up to the community to establish what they feel is the criteria for open space. It's interesting, I was talking to David Biller today, who's the assessing manager for the town of Andover, and they had, in 2019, they had the open space classification, and they decided to drop that classification primarily because the Department of Revenue is making it so difficult to define it. And so they've, it's not that they're trying, the Department of Revenue is being difficult, it's they want them to be more specific, and it's hard in this type of property to be specific. So they've decided to adopt, to drop it. Other than that, 20 communities adopt the open space classification. In Essex County, as I said, Andover has it, Beverly, Newburyport, and interestingly enough, Raleigh, which has a large amount of vacant land, has adopted it. Again, the Board, and we never discussed this when I was the assessing manager for the town, not because I didn't think it was important, but I didn't know it was an option necessarily that we needed to discuss during classification. But I noticed Ray had put it in, I wanted to continue that, something he had started. Historically, the Board has not granted a discount for open space. As a matter of fact, there's only one town in the Commonwealth that grants a discount for open space, and that's Bedford. Finally, shifting the levy. And what is the shift in the levy? Shifting the tax rate moves the tax burden to be raised by the town off of residential properties and onto commercial, industrial, and personal property. It establishes a minimum factor for residential properties and sets a higher factor for commercial properties. And begins with a single rate, our rate this year, we have a tax levy of $46,760,981.48 and a value of $3,198,630,744. If you take that figure, the value, divided by 1,000, you come up with a rate of $14.24 per thousand. Chapter 200 allows Linfield to select a factor that is less than one for residential properties, therefore shifting the burden, tax burden, off of residential properties and onto commercial, industrial properties. In 2004, Linfield shows a factor of less than one for the first time, and has done so ever since. Classification, very simply, identifies, sets properties into different classes. Residential is classified as, beginning with a one. Open space begins with a two. Commercial property begins with a three, or classified beginning with a three. Industrial properties are classified beginning with a four. And all personal property is classified beginning with a five, and that allows us to split the levy internally. Currently, residential properties consist, the town has approximately 85.79% of residential properties by value. 12.35% of commercial properties by value. 0.64% by value of industrial properties, Linfield has almost no industrial properties at all. And then 1.22% of personal property. In the past, the current rates for the last three or four years are showing up here. And this depicts the town, the residential rate, the commercial rate, the Center Water District rate, and the Linfield Water District, which also classifies its rate, because Linfield Center District doesn't, moving away from the microphone again. Linfield Center Water District does not have an appreciable amount of commercial land, so they can't shift the levy. South Linfield or Linfield Water District has a little entity called Market Street, which constitutes over half the total value of commercial property in town. And that allows, gives the Linfield Water District the chance, the opportunity to shift their levy, their rate, and to the benefit of the residential properties. So Chris, you have that benefit. You're welcome, I thought I'd single you out. That's no problem. So, town of Linfield's historical rate shift from 2012 has gone up consistently. Before that, it tends to go with the market. If we have a very strong residential market, residential properties appreciate more quickly, and therefore, they shift the levy off of commercial and onto residential property. All this is an attempt to do is negate or equalize that shift. And the Board's been very good about that. But in the, when we have a recessionary period where residential properties are not as popular, when the residential properties are tending to be either stable or decline in value, and commercial properties are appreciating, then that's reversed. The levy gets shifted back off of residential properties and onto commercial properties, and the Board is very good about doing exactly the opposite and shifting the rate in a different direction. This just shows some of the rates that we have in some of the surrounding communities. The lowest residential rate is 9.5 in Wilmington, and the highest commercial rate is 30.94. And Woburn is the lowest, and Wilmington is the highest. Linfield sits somewhere in between. Our rate last year was $13.91 for residential and for commercial, industrial, and personal property, with $17.95. If we adopted a single rate this year, it would be 1462. A split rate, using last year's split, would give us a residential rate of 1404 in 1813. That would be, continue the shift the way it was last year, if we increased it. And this is only for example, for purposes of example, to let's say 1.29. The rate, residential rate would drop to 1836 and would increase to 1878. So that's basically the presentation. It's up to the Board of Selectmen to decide what residential factor they want to adopt, and that's usually done by coming up with a shift in the levy onto commercial property. And that's solely up to you.
Thank you, Dick.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So, understanding what the factors are that we're facing, I don't know, I don't have any desire to give either the exemptions or the discount as originally presented, so.
I would agree.
We don't have to vote on that unless we want to do it. So I don't have any desire to do that. I don't think anyone else in my Board does at this time.
I would agree with you.
As far as the tax shift goes, I believe we are limited to the 1.29.
1.3 is the highest.
1.3 is the maximum?
Mm-hmm.
And that, but this is the last year that that is in our agreement with the Market Street.
With Market Street, yes.
Correct, okay. All right, so I would recommend the 1.29 on my side. It's, other than that, we're shifting more of the burden onto the homeowners, which I don't think we should be looking to do.
Okay.
There's already going to be an increase on their side.
Mm-hmm.
I believe with maxing out the 1.29 and going to a 13.92 for homeowners, that's roughly a $200 on average per household increase. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I would, I would recommend we approve that as a Board. Any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a question before we get to voting on it. So, it would seem to me, Dick, that the one thing that's different this year, if I'm correct, as opposed to the last couple of years, is the condo average value. If I'm correct, the last few years, we've seen pretty dramatic increases in the average value of the condos, and this year was a decrease?
It was not a decrease, but it stayed basically the same. We didn't have any reason for changing it, and doing, I was brought in a few weeks ago to do the values for the town after Ray had left. And I didn't see any reason, and the ratios that existed in the, that were exhibited by the sales from 2018, which is the year we choose from, and I actually expanded the sales to the latter part of '17 and the beginning of '19. I didn't see any real reason for raising the values on condos to bring them into line. They were within the tolerances allowed by DOR, so I figured I'd let them be. I understand they've gone up considerably over the last couple of years, so.
Yeah, they peaked one year, they jumped in assessment, right?
Yeah, but that's my understanding, again, I wasn't involved with that, so I can't say emphatically.
So even with this commercial increase, what, how does that compare to where we were before the adjustment on Market Street? 1, 2, 4, but as far as the overall tax, what was the, what was the adjustment?
Well, I mean, just in terms of valuation, we can give you the actual tax version if you want, but the total valuation of the town is, you know, $3.198 billion.
Billion, right.
Residential is $2,734 million change, and commercial, industrial, and personal is $454 million. So, again, it's, it's a, primarily residential.
It is, right, right.
So there is some relief, the shift does offer some relief to the taxpayers, the residential tax base law, while being fair. And this isn't driven by Market Street, this is driven by all of the small businesses in the community.
It is.
And Market Street, 52%, that's 52%.
Right, and we're still limited on what we can do on a shift anyways, but that is not, not that we want to, you know, do any more than that.
This decision, this decision from the Board, and what the assistance of Mr. Simmons is based on, again, fairness and of all of them, it's not driven by any agreement or settlement of the Market Street. All of them, it's not driven by any agreement or settlement of the...
Correct. Correct. It's what makes sense at this time.
It does, yeah.
Okay.
One thing, I should interject. I misstated the levy, the slide was wrong that I showed before on the rates. The residential rate, if we went to a 1.29, would be $13.92, and the commercial rate would be 1886. I think it's correct on your handout, but not here.
So just back to the cap for a minute, just so I understand that. So that's contractual obligation, is with, that was a part of the...
Agreement?
Agreement?
Yeah, but that doesn't drive us, that drives the, you know, pile of the conversation and with Market Street, but it represents 52% of the commercial, industrial property.
Right, but what... And it's just, this is more my own curiosity. So if you were to go above that cap, what's the outfall of that?
I believe according to the agreement, Dick, if we go above the cap, they have a right to go back to the AGB.
Okay.
Okay, and apply all evaluations that we've been fighting for five years. But, but, that's not driving it.
Okay.
I mean, the difference, you know, we really did try and think through this whole thing. And the difference between the 1.29 and 1.30 is $34,000 in taxes.
Yeah, I'm not...
So it's really...
No, I just want to understand the mechanics of it and what, you know, various obligations are, that's all.
And Dick runs the miles for us. And you try, you try to look at them in individual, individual, and individual properties. And again, it's fair to residents, it's fair to the tax, to the commercial, industrial base. You know, again, it's obviously you folks now can decide on spending.
And then in talking to Ray Bowley, who preceded me over the years that I was gone, the Board has been very good about, being very persistent about getting the value up as high as they possibly could here. So that the benefit was to the taxpayers of the town, to the residential taxpayers of the town. So they've done a very good job at trying to defend that value and keep it as high as possible. Within reason.
While being fair to everyone.
Right.
Right. And you demonstrated that by not asking, looking to do the maximum amount or more than that would make, because it makes sense the way it is. Particularly with residential values going up. So I think that makes sense.
Dick, so the increase last year in average tax was about the same, around 2... What was the average last year increase?
I think he was on vacation.
I was retired. I don't know. Let me look here, see if we have a slide that'll cover that. I don't think we have a slide that will cover that, so I'm...
That's fine.
I think it was in the same ballpark, a little less.
It's similar, the rate, the rate is going up 1%, 1 cent...
Yes.
From the last year's rate. And so it's not increasing the burden on the residential properties much at all, staying basically the same.
Well, the average, the average.
Yeah, I think it's like maybe $100 change on the average house in town.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? So I would, I would take a motion to approve the residential rate at 1.29 and the commercial rate at 1880... Well, the shift at 1.29, we're just going to approve the shift, correct?
Right. Well, and that'll work out the residential. The residential factor is, I have the sheet here, you'll be signing it in a second, is .952. Julie, perhaps you will not let me back to town unless I have your signature.
So to say, so moved? Chairman?
Set.
All those in favor? Aye. Great. Dick, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, just as an aside, I'd like to take a second to go on to thank publicly Mr. Simmons for coming out of retirement and helping us out with Don, Don Garrity, our chairman, for really stepping up and getting this work done. And the, you know, again, it's a complicated process, but it's a fair process.
Sure.
And I get Dick did a great job in doing it.
Great. Thank you, Rich, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dick, thank you. Thank you for being back, coming back.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, guys.
And we're at X. We're ready to do it.
Yeah, I heard, I heard, I heard.
I can't wait till next year's hearing, I love these.
Yeah, I bet.
Good to see you all. Nice to see you.
Rich, thank you very much.
My pleasure, Don. Have a good night and drive carefully.
Nothing like a good riveting tax classification hearing.
We had a room full of people at this place.
This room was packed before that.
So you guys signed that paper?
Oh. What do I do with that?
Pretty good.
I saw you. This one here?
Right here.
This one here?
Yeah, just anybody...
Any on the bottom?
Yep, any question on the bottom?
Yeah, go ahead. Next on the agenda, we have the acceptance of a resignation from our town clerk, Trudy Reed. I quickly read the letter we received. Says, "Please accept this letter as my notice of resignation of my position of town clerk for Town of Lynnfield. My last day will be, with Lynnfield will be December 27th, but I plan to use my vacation week of December 23rd. Thank you for your support and opportunities you have provided me over the last five and a half years. Lynnfield has a climate that makes it a pleasure to come to work each morning, and I will miss you all. If I can do anything to help you in finding my replacement, please let me know. Sincerely, Trudy Reed." Let me just say what a pleasure it's been to work with Trudy over the last five and a half years. And I think she, first off, she'll be greatly missed, and I will, I think it'll be hard to replace her, but I do wish her the best in her new endeavor, I believe, North Andover?
Yes, she'll be the town clerk of North Andover.
Town clerk of North Andover, so I wish her the best in that and for her and the family. Gentlemen?
Chairman, I would agree. I think Trudy brought great professionalism to the office of the town clerk. She's worked hand in hand with, I think, two moderators that she worked with. Has looked at ways to improve town meeting. I've worked closely with her on a number of different issues, and she's always been somebody that we could go to. And she was always positive, that she's going to be a big shoes to fill, I think, my, I think, Phil, you said that. So I know we can do it, but I wish her the very best, and I hope she remains in touch with us, because I think she's a good friend to all of us.
Well said, Chris. I think the key word that you used is professional. She certainly, in her five and a half years, brought a high degree of professionalism to the job. She's moved the ball forward on so many fronts, and she'll be sorely missed. But I'm happy for her, I'm happy for her family, and wish her nothing but the best going forward.
So Chris, if you'd make the motion for accepting her resignation?
I move that the Board accept with great regret the resignation of our town clerk, Trudy Reed, effective December 27, 2019, and that Assistant Town Clerk, Diane Hammerbeck, be appointed interim town clerk effective December 28, 2019.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the ratification of the contract with the Lynnfield Library Association. Rob?
Yes, this contract, I want to thank the library association for working so well with us. We had an excellent negotiation beneficial to taxpayers and the employees of Lynnfield Public Library. It is in line with our 1.5% increase. It also addresses some tuition reimbursement issues that we want to encourage staff, both in terms of formal education, the library sciences, and professional development, establishment of a sick leave bank that is funded by the employees themselves, and a small adjustment to longevity payment schedule to retain employees after they exceed their steps. It was ratified by the union a few weeks ago, and I certainly recommend passage by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Rob, and I appreciate all the hard work you did on this. I know it took a little extra time and effort, but I believe we've come up with a very good agreement. I have no questions. Any others on the Board?
No, none.
I'd just like to comment, Mr. Chairman, that to congratulate both Rob and Bob, not only on this contract, but all of them on the town side to this point, that they've worked out, I think, deals that are win-win for both our loyal employees and for the town's fiscal standing. So I'd just like to compliment both of them. It took a lot of hours, time and effort to get to where we're at now.
Great, well said.
Thank you. I move that the Board approve the memorandum of agreement in the final contract between Town of Lynnfield and Lynnfield Library Staff Association, Local 4928, American Federation of Teachers, AFT, Massachusetts, for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Let me sign those up, guys. And the last item tonight on the agenda would be the use of facilities for a, I think it's a manger. A manger on the town common, as requested by Mary Stewart.
What did it say?
Says menorah. We already did the menorah.
That was last week.
So I believe everything's been signed properly, and so she's looking to display the manger from 1221 to 1226. Any other comments or questions?
No.
No, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move that the Board approve the use of the common for a manger seen provided by a resident, Mary Stewart.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's the end of our agenda, so thank you and good night. Make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.